Good evening. I'd like to call to order the St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2024. Nancy, please call the roll.
Martin, Lencioni.
Here.
Gem.
Here.
Patrulla.
Here.
Werbal.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Locatid.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Bongard.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Councilmember A. Please talk.
Help us as a council to exemplify leadership that involves courage and integrity. May we be forever mindful of our positions, of our responsibilities, of service to our community as we make decisions this evening and in the future. We ask for discernment as to what is best for those we represent. Amen.
Thank you. Please join Councilmember Bob Gamm and us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just try and sit the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is the Youth Commission Impact Award. We have Donna Clavelli, who's the Chair of the Youth Commission, and Dan Kelly, who will be presenting the awards this evening. Please join us at the podium. Do you know how to work that, sir?
On behalf of the Youth Commission, I'd like to thank every member of the City Council for allowing us this opportunity. Our chairperson, Donna Clavelli, is representing us as well as Erin Livermore. And it's always special recognizing the youth of St. Charles. And you've given us the opportunity to give our Impact Award the last few years. It's a little extra special tonight. These two amazing young women are also on our Student Advisory Board. So they are consultants to the Youth Commission. They take time out once a month before our Youth Commission meeting to meet with both Donna and John Stock, another Youth Commissioner, with another number of Northeast and Compass students to fill us in. And it means a lot to us. You know, we feel we know a little bit more. But both of them are here tonight to be recognized for their philanthropic efforts on behalf of Cal Angels. So they were intricately involved with the Just Shave It campaign. We all know about Cal Angels. So these rising seniors from St. Charles East, they represent St. Charles. We should all be very proud. So Zaracoin, Brianna Manazas, we have a plaque for both of you. And we'll make sure to get pictures before it's all said and done. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next presentation is for Motorcycle Awareness Month, which is May. I'd like to bring up Chris Newman to talk for a few minutes regarding this proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation. Forgive me. It's Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 24, where safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state. And whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And where motorcycles are primary common and economic means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear and contribute in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadway and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the members of Duquesne Abate of Illinois Inc., a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs and to the general public in our city and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past eight years. And whereas all motorcyclists should join Duquesne Abate of Illinois Inc. in actively promoting safe operation motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect for the citizens of our city and state. And whereas motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations. And whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the city of St. Charles and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now therefore, I, Mr. Besner, Mayor Potem, speaking on behalf of Laura Vitek, Mayor of City St. Charles, in recognition of 37 years of Duquesne Abate of Illinois and over 352,318 registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Awareness Month and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways.
I'd like to present this to you, Chris. This is Chris Newman. And he will speak for a few minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Besner, the Council and City of St. Charles. Duquesne Abate, a brotherhood aimed towards education. Our main thrust is in the high schools. In Duquesne and Kane County alone, we had over 5,200 kids last year in the high school driver's ed classes. We'll go in for one session of driver's ed and teach them about motorcycle safety and motorcycle awareness. And this is one of our major thrusts that we do, you know, as well as motorcyclist safety all across the state. We work with our local elected representatives statewide and nationally for motorcyclist rights and safety issues. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
We obviously have a couple of pictures up there. Thank you very much. Item number six, Councilmember Werbal, the omnibus vote, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as presented on the agenda.
Second. That was moved by Werbal, seconded by Councilmember Patrulla. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item, whole business, there's no old business this evening. Item two, new business. Two A, a recommendation from Mayor Vitek to approve the reappointment of Megan Bishop to the Youth Commission.
Move for approval.
Second. That was moved by Werbal, seconded by Bongard.
Is Megan in the audience this evening?
With that said, can we have a vote, please? Call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item two B, a recommendation from Mayor Vitek to approve appointment of Nick Smith to Natural Resources Commission. Nick Smith is here this evening. He's sitting in the front row.
Move for approval.
Move approval. So that was moved by Werbal, seconded by.
No, I did it.
Oh, Patrulla, I'm sorry, seconded by Lencioni. Please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Thank you. Item two C, the Police Department Chief Keegan will be next.
Thank you, Mr. Besner. So item C is a motion to approve a 2:00 a.m. late night permit for El Santo Mexican Grill and Cantina in the city of St. Charles for this fiscal year. This appeared earlier this evening at the Liquor Control Commission meeting in advance with a three zero recommendation. The owner and operator of Spotted Fox, Marwan Tadeh, has elected to do a DBA or Doing Business Exchange and change his current facility to the previous mentioned El Santo Grill and Cantina. The late night permit was issued for this establishment for a 1:00 a.m. permit. Because of the change in the permit request, it requires both Liquor Control Commission and City Council action. The DBA change is not. That was administratively handled by city staff. Once he obtained his new local license and his DBA name was filed with the Secretary of State's office, he then went downtown to the city of Chicago and obtained his state license. So with that, I'm asking for a 2:00 a.m. late night permit request, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the council or the chief?
I do. Good evening, Chief. Just got a question. So they changed your whole business model. But are they still continuing the license from the Spotted Owl? Don't they have to get a whole new license then?
No, the LLC and the corporate paperwork remain the same, Mr. Locatid. So the DBA change is allowed through our city code.
It is allowed, okay.
He initiated that paperwork and then did the update with the city along with the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Lencioni, seconded by Councilmember Gem. Nancy, please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item D is a motion to approve a proposal for a new Class D1 temporary liquor license for St. John Newman's Church on Sunday, June 2nd. Chief will give us more info on that.
Yes, thank you. So this also appeared earlier this evening with a three zero recommendation at the Liquor Control Commission. This is a repeat event. Because of timing, we had to take it away from the City Council. The parish filed the paperwork late last week. Takes place on Sunday, June 2nd after masses, and it's the Parish Annual Fest. The hours of operation will be 12:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move for approval.
Second.
I'll move.
Councilmember Patrulla made a motion, and Councilmember Bongard seconded. Nancy, please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Thank you. Item two E is a motion to approve a resolution conditionally authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance resolution for Pheasant Run Resort Subdivision, Russell.
Yes, good evening. These three agenda items that are upcoming are related to utility improvements that were required as a part of the re-subdivision of the Pheasant Run Resort property that took place in 2020. That subdivision created two lots that comprise the former resort and one lot that is now McGrath Honda. The subdivision approval required the installation of sanitary sewers and a sanitary sewer lift station to serve future development of the resort property and McGrath Honda facility. That work is completed and the city is ready to accept the utility improvements. Item is being brought forward to council for action tonight as there's a timing concern related to approval of an IEP A sewer service for the McGrath Kia dealership. The Kia dealership could be ready to open within the next few weeks, but might be delayed by the IEP A permit in the event the lift station is not accepted by the city. So as of last week, there were a few administrative items outstanding. Staff and the city attorney have been coordinating resolution of those items. So as of tonight, we have all three of those items in hand. We have the bill of sale, a release of lien by the contractor, and an executed easement plat. So staff is recommending we proceed with the final acceptance approval tonight. Although it's listed as a conditional approval on the agenda, because all of the conditions have been satisfied, this would be a final acceptance approval based on a council vote tonight. So this approval should prevent any further delay that might impact the opening of the McGrath Kia dealership. And we now have all the items that we would typically require to proceed with the utility acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Russ?
Move for approval.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Werbal, seconded by Councilmember Patrulla. Nancy, please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes. Sir, before we go on, just to make the record show, Alderman Werbal, you made the motion. Is it fair to say that the motion should indicate final approval, just to, for the record's right, and it never comes back in a weird way later?
I think the action on the motion, because it's listed as conditional approval, because all those conditions have been satisfied, we'll be able to execute the final acceptance resolution based on that.
So what do you need me to do?
No, you don't need to do anything. Russ is telling you that even though it's listed as conditional, all those conditions have been satisfied. The actual resolution is final acceptance.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to check. Thank you.
Yep.
Item two A, a motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a plat of easement for Pheasant Run Resort Subdivision. So move. That was moved by.
Second.
Councilmember Lencioni, seconded by Councilmember Gem. Are there any questions for Russ on this item? If not, please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Thank you. Item two G, a motion to approve a resolution conditionally authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance resolution for sanitary sewer for McGrath Honda, 475 East Main Street.
Yes, this item is for acceptance of the sanitary sewers from McGrath Honda site. They're connected to the resort lift station and sewer. All the items have been provided, and based on the acceptance of the lift station, we can proceed with final acceptance for these improvements as well.
Okay, thank you. Move for approval.
Second. That was motioned by Councilmember Bongard, seconded by Councilmember Lencioni.
Please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On committee report, Government Operations, Councilmember Weber.
Yeah, so item A1, motion to approve an amendment for the city ordinance regarding the Title V business license and regulations. I don't, I know Chief Keegan was just up or, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I have a question for staff. I'm fine with this, but when we were discussing this, we also discussed coming back with some parameters for food trucks, maybe a permit system and something with the public health certificate. Is that still in the works and will that come back to us?
Yeah, so we're looking at a potential code amendment to create a permit process for the businesses that host food trucks that would have some requirements that they would sign off on based on what's required in the code, but also the Health Department licensing for the trucks that they host.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, look, I did look. You, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I've moved it already.
Oh, second.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Werbal. Nancy, please call the roll.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werbal.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Locatid.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item B, Government Services, Councilmember Bongard, anything further? Nothing further. Item number C, Planning and Development, Councilmember Lencioni.
Nothing further. Nothing further, you're right.
With that, is there anyone here for public comment? Please approach the podium. Can you say your first and last names, please?
First and last name, William Schroder.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Schroder. I'm a resident of St. Charles. I have been for 18 years. I live on South Sixth Avenue. I speak tonight to bring attention to the matter of rental housing. Rental housing is an important part of the community. It is part of 12,000 owner occupied in rental housing units. It's important if it is well maintained with property maintenance standards and kept relatively crime free and family friendly, because that's what St. Charles is about, correct? I bring an example tonight of one of the many rental houses that are impacting the community, specifically my area. The house is located at 609 South Sixth Avenue. That address may ring a bell for some people. It was previously owned by past council member Jim Martin and his wife and his dear wife Rita. The house was sold and has been a rental for years. The renters and owners have not taken care of the property. Foggrass and weeds, raccoons, you name it. The property has vermin holes, ivy blocked windows, a motorcycle sitting in the backyard with weeds growing through it right now, raccoons, and a missing front window as of last week. The raccoons and squirrels were crawling in the front window, and this is 500 feet from Lincoln School. As of today, the city says it's compliant, and I disagree with that for staff's purposes here. The window is installed, but the property is deteriorated. The renters are also drug users and have been for many years. I have reported the drug use to the police, including parties in the front yard, where they had infants as they were smoking blunts in the front yard, 500 feet away from Lincoln School. The drug use extended down the block as they walked in front of Lincoln School, smoking marijuana. Again, 500 feet away. The constant smell of drugs emanating from the front of the house, I can't even open my windows. I have a teenage daughter. I do not want that in my house. I'm sure no one else here would want that either. Maybe it was the argument between the renters at 609 on Christmas Day, where the house was surrounded by police. It looked like Christmas Vacation for anybody that's seen that movie. And as we drove away, maybe it was the trash that was left for the raccoons on Saturday night, as they dragged the toilet tissue into my garden, or the used drug containers that were sitting on the driveway as I sat there looking at it. This is St. Charles. It's not inner city Chicago. Maybe it is the overcrowding with a total of six cars in their driveway one time. Now, Jim and Rita's house is pretty tiny. If you take a drive by, stop by. This past weekend, there was a wonderful scavenger hunt. You know, the backbone of this community are the kids. There's a family across the street that moved literally next door. Their daughter was having a scavenger hunt with her friend. Six tweens had a list, had everything. How would you like to have that with a scavenger hunt with tweens or kids next door to your house? I bring this to the attention of the council. That is vital importance that you consider the impact of adding rental units and holding ownership accountable. You impact this community with the planning when you already have 12,000 housing units, and this is out of your reports, including rental units, and then add additional 1,000 rental units without planning for checks and balances. And that's for Russ Colby in the Daily Herald, 2023. That's an increase of 8.3% without checks and balances anywhere, anywhere. I encourage the community to look at rental registration, rental licensing, crime free ordinances, which allow for checks and balances. These ordinances are not heavy hammers, not at all. They are checks and balances. I manage a rental licensing program in another community. We have 8,000 rental units, 8,000 of them. I've been at that community 19 years. One of the first communities in the state of Illinois that established rental licensing and crime free. They are great resources. You can speak with our police department, CD, anyone. Yes, the state legislator, if anybody's been following it, the House has passed draft or has draft laws out there. State Senate had something. It's been squashed at this point. But you look at it, it's still a model for providing checks and balances in these communities. The rental licensing and crime free ordinances provide for equitable housing opportunities, equitable, where everyone, everyone has an opportunity to have safe, reasonable, and hold owners, renters accountable for their behavior and actions. I show this example where I'm tired of it. I'm tired of living next to that. I'm tired of seeing it. I'm tired of smelling it. I'm tired of having kids walk past that. I don't know what else to do. We need help if I have to get signatures, if I have to get more people to come here. Whatever I'll do, I will do, because this is not right at all. Please help. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Item 11, additional items for mayor, council, or staff. I got one. Wait, wait, wait. Can we, yeah, I got one. Yes, approach the podium. Sorry about that. First and last name, please.
My name is Mike Fokes. I live in St. Charles at 1117 West Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Veterans Center, which consists of the AMVES, the American Legion Post 342, the VFW Post 5036, and the Vietnam Veterans of American Association. Coming up next weekend is Memorial Day, and the city of St. Charles has a wonderful job in their newsletter earlier this month promoting Memorial Day. And the local paper, usually The Chronicle, comes out the week before Memorial Day and lists things that are going to be happening on Memorial Day. I've been asked to come here to help reinforce that. Did you get a flyer in your agenda tonight? Something like this? Some people did, Paul.
This is in the city council. From last Friday.
Okay. We implore you to pass that on to your constituents, to pass that on to your list that you rely on for elections, okay, to get people to come out. It's a wonderful, wonderful occasion. We also encourage you to come out for the early morning services. They start at 6:00 a.m. down at the Baker Memorial Center, and then we go to three separate cemeteries, South Avenue and North Fifth Avenue. Now, I don't think it's happened in quite a while, but there was a time when some city business got done at these early morning services, okay? I think it might have been before the Open Meetings Act, okay? After the ceremonies at the cemeteries, there's going to be a fundraiser breakfast at the Baker Memorial Church. The cost is five bucks per person. They feel that's pretty reasonable. Then there's going to be a parade at 10 o'clock, and this is where we need your help to encourage people to come to parade, because sometimes they just forget about it. You know, it's a free day. There's no school. They don't have to work. And then they miss the parade. And it's, oh gee, wisdom is a parade. It ought to have been nice to go to. And encourage them to come and wave flags and be proud that we are living in the United States of America, the greatest country in the world, and in the city of St. Charles, Illinois, one of the best cities in the state of Illinois, if not the best, okay? And then there's going to be a memorial service right down here in the riverbank by Freedom Shrine, okay? Retired Colonel Dwayne Guiton will give the main sermon. No, it's not a sermon. He's going to give a speech, okay? Father Peck will give the sermon, okay? So encourage your constituents, get out your flags, wave them, have a good time, come to the parade, come to the early morning services. It's a good way to kick off the summer season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Okay, we're back to the mayor, council, or staff. Any comments?
Yeah. Yeah, South Pheasant Run got started on Friday. Is everything still moving along as planned? Have there been any setbacks, or is it all good?
I'd love to tell you there are some setbacks, but it seems like every week we encounter a different one. It does seem like they have corrected all of the issues that were pending right now. They've got the crane operator. They've got the backfill in place. We are expecting it to be finalized over the next six to eight weeks.
Thank you. I did see him working this morning.
Just for staff, we are aware of the gentleman's concerns on South Sixth Avenue. We're going to get those addressed. Are we, okay?
We'll follow up offline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional items? Okay, that leads to, don't forget, National Public Works Week is May 19th through the 25th. Public Works Department brings their A-game to everything they do. Their contributions to the environment and our community set the highest standards, and we are grateful for the support they provide to all departments as well as the community. And I know we have some youth recognition this evening, but don't forget, and congrats and good luck. It's graduation night for both the seniors of St. Charles East and St. Charles North High Schools. We wish you all well and continued success as you start a new journey. If you know any of these students, then you know them. If you know any of these students, then you know our future looks bright. And as the gentleman just spoke here, I hope to see everyone at the Memorial Day Parade Ceremony beginning at 10:00 AM this Monday, May 27th, for the parade. Obviously, if you want to join everyone at the beginning of the services at 6:00 AM throughout the morning, please participate, and you can check the city's website for details. And last but not least, and if I'm mistaken, correct me, but the Art Fair, St. Charles Art Fair is this weekend. That's always a well-attended event. Hopefully, we're going to have beautiful weather for it, but please make sure to try to carve out some time to enjoy that event.